Did that remind me where they are, all of those [inaudible]? Thanks for the reminder.
Uh, well, Red is having his procedural wins. Did you go last week or just, uh, Ricky Jackson?
No, no, I, I had to go.
He's right here, he's very proud.
Because he, he stands up. He got it stored up.
Yeah.
He's all.
He man. Oh, really?
Well, this guy. He lives down there, so he's keeping his eye on things a lot more than even the people who live there.
Well, it hasn't.
It's not that many, but it's so spread.
Having seats.
Camera. Hazes. It was always haze and even past haze is almost below wedge. It's really, it's, it's really long. I, I'm not sure if it goes as far as [inaudible]. I, I know this morning, I, well, yes, I went hunting and I grabbed it back and seen it capture to go from Capri Parish to, I was with Jeff Davis, it turns from one to another, and then I was just north of Highway twenty-seven, the south of twenty-seven. He's on [inaudible].
Well, I wonder what will happen over there. I'll have to wait.
I need to call my friend and ask him if he's, uh, [inaudible]. What's your, what's your [inaudible]?
Jimmy Shaw. Shaw, Jimmy Shaw.
Yes.
James Shaw.
James.
Jimmy.
Joe. Sam, Sam Williams, Williamsburg, [inaudible]. And [inaudible]. He, I don't know, he probably can't, he ever was home in [inaudible]. So, him, so. It's [inaudible]. Maggie, that all.
Yes, sir. It's probably just the wrong kind of pen to put on that, which I thought about.
Seating.
Hey, [inaudible]. We're seeing you a lot. Arlene, you ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty. Um, Ms. Arlene, if you please call me if you want. Well, I'm sorry. Um, remember that you will please do the prayer and [inaudible].
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the season that we are going through at this time. A special prayer for all of our veterans, Lord, for those who have served and those who have sacrificed, the ultimate sacrifice, and those who are currently serving. We ask, Lord, that your spirit dwell within us all as we make decisions and continue to help develop and grow our city of Sulfur. We ask a special blessing over our mayor, all of the administrators, and all of our officials. Thank you, Lord, for everything that you bestow upon us each and every man. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ellender, here is Mr. Nata.
Here.
Ms. Hardy, here is Ashar.
Here is Thomas.
Here. Um, next item, will you do the approval minutes previous meeting?
Second.
Roll call, please, can I, is my mic on? Roll call, I mean, Arlene, if you please, uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Ellender, here is Mr. Nata.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Ashar.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes. And the next item is approval of agenda, we have some items that we need to add and amend.
Make a motion in a second to amend item number nineteen for the following. Resolution rejecting and authorizing the re-advertising of bids for Sulfur Law Enforcement Center storm repairs MIA number H one dash two, one, 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 eight dash DA. Second.
Would anyone wish to speak on the change? Roll call, please, Arlene.
Uh, Mr. Nata.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Ashar.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Ellender.
Yes. Motion in a second to add number twenty-three A. Resolution authorizing the advertisement of bids for the annual supply of pipe and fittings, limestone and asphalt mix, and chemical supplies for the city. Hold on, let me see.
Would anyone like to speak on the addition? Ms. Arlene, if you please, do roll call.
Um, you need to stay on this one.
Uh, this item was added to the agenda because the agenda was already published before, um, we received the information.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Ashar.
Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Ellender.
Yes.
Mr. Nata.
Yes.
First item on the agenda is a presentation. Oh, let's motion, the motion in a second for approval of agenda as amended. Roll call, please.
Uh, Ms. Ashar.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Ellender.
Yes.
Mr. Nata.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Item one is presentation by Baron Dotson, this, uh, for Louisiana Region Five STEM Project Coordinator, Ms. Linda Harding.
We welcome you, Mr. Dotson, and you have the mic.
Um, do I have to use a microphone? Can I speak out?
You, whatever.
Um, perfectly fine. First of all, I was [inaudible]. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, first and foremost, thank you all for having us, I sent out, what prompted this is, is, like I said, I am the project coordinator of the Region Five STEM Center. Um, and I did send, um, a presentation and to the town of the city council members, as well as many other different people throughout, uh, the entire region. Um, and there's a backtrack, we, we see what it is, but as a backtrack, to give you a backtrack, a background of William, I like to say, we're focusing on project coordinator at the STEM Center. Um, and what we focus on, um, at the STEM Center is anything science, technology, engineering, um, math, mathematics, of course, I know we have several STEM schools that's here, um, in Sulfur. Um, but what happened is, uh, several years ago, Senator Hewitt, uh, working with the legislature here in the state of Louisiana, um, they vowed to put some money aside to open up what's called nine regional STEM centers. Um, one of those right here in southwest Louisiana, we are housing Lake Charles Boston, in Lake Charles, but we represent not just Capri Parish, but the entire southwest Louisiana region, including all the parishes, Cameron, Vernon, Bogard, you know, basically all the six parishes, very loosely familiar to the workforce region map. Um, what they did, what we realized, what they realized was, is that we're not preparing anybody, not our students, not our people for the jobs that are here, in fact, their students, um, and the people that were raising up are leaving Louisiana for jobs, and the companies and the industries, especially right here in Sulfur, with all the industry that we have here, they're hiring from outside Louisiana to come in and, uh, you know, receive those jobs. So, taking this money to open up these nine STEM centers, what they said is, what can we do to prepare not just, as we say, K to twelve education, okay, but college and career, which includes, uh, both the colleges and those people working in career, but workforce, which includes each and every single person, homeschool, private school, charter school, public school, you name it, it's not a single person, from kindergarten all the way till you retire, that we can work with, prepare for any career, any job that's in the future. Why? Because we do not know what type of jobs and what careers want to be here, um, in the future, for example, when we was little, um, the jobs that exist did not exist then that exist now. Um, so with that, I sent out that, um, notification to each and one of our, uh, board members here, as well as to every single industry, uh, which was our partners, uh, for the things that we have going on, every single, uh, project coordinator, or anybody who's running any type of industry here, uh, any one of the plants, as well as each major company that is here in the southwest Louisiana, uh, region map, because we're pushing all different type of programs STEM. Um, now, I could talk about a whole, it's a long time, and I, I'm gonna try to slow down just a little bit, because I could talk for about an hour about all the different type of programs that we have, and we're talking about programs, we're talking from land programs with robotics, we're talking underwater programs with robotics, we're talking aeronautics with drones and robotics, as well as an entire space research program, where we have students that are sending experiments, as we speak right now, in our second year of it, um, sending their experiments to the International Space Station, so astronauts can actually conduct their experiment, then bring it back down, um, so they can compare it to see, well, how can we, uh, well, study and have students study and the effects of basically having no gravity. Um, but I'm here today to talk about something specific, and it's competitive robotics, um, maybe some of you have heard about this, um, but when we talk about competitive robotics, how many of y'all seen BattleBots? Okay, we got some people, I got one of my kids in the back, actually, he's actually on our robotics team, I didn't know he was coming here today, so when he walked in, I'm like, my boy right there, you know what I mean? Um, he's actually on our elementary robotics team for IQ, um, and when we're talking about competitive robotics, we're talking ba-, uh, BattleBots, but for kids, okay? Um, and why we say co- competitive robotics, and not just your classroom robotics, which we do have in every single elementary school, every single middle school, and we're trying to get it into the high schools, but we need a little bit of support, which is one of the reasons why I'm here as well. Competitive robotics is competition drives innovation, I mean, we look at all the different industries, we look at all the different plants, um, there's a reason why they here, um, they're very competitive with each other, and, um, just here as America, we know we compete against other nations, some of the biggest companies on the planet compete against each other as well, well, we know that competition drives innovation, and, um, with us being a STEM center here, um, we're the only one in the entire state that's housed in a K to twelve system. Um, every other one is at a university, one at Sciport, but we are the only one in the entire state of Louisiana that has direct access to each and every single one of the students. Not to mention, we're the only place in the entire state of Louisiana that has as much support when it comes to industries and businesses, nobody else in the entire state has it like we have right here, and thanks to our industry partners like Philo Sixty-Six, giving the sixty-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars, forty-five thousand dollars, back to back to back to keep these programs going on, she neared back two thousand eighteen to get us up off the ground, we would not exist without these partners, what we realized that we want to be the hub for STEM, and you can call us the Silicon Valley of the South, right here in Lake Charles. Um, a lot of people don't realize, like, what we have here, what we recognize and we realize that, having cybersecurity housed in Sh- in, in Shreveport, okay, having the head stratcom in Barstow Air Force Base in Shreveport, having Chinak here, with having Northrop Grumman, which is one of the largest, as you know who Northrop Grumman is, uh, one of the best weapon developers in the entire world, okay, but having all of this here in this one area, we are the hub for STEM, which is future technologies, okay? And with that, we're talking competitive robotics, we are now the hub and biggest robotic place in the entire state of Louisiana. What we've done, we put that, like I said, robotics in thirty-three elementary schools, we put it in all eleven middle schools, um, and we're still picking back up after the hurricane, um, from now, we have it right now at about six high schools, Sulfur just not got off the, uh, got back into it this year for the first time, but we have it almost each and every single one of our high schools, and we are now the biggest and the largest center for robotics in the entire state of Louisiana, okay, both in Lake Charles and in the Sulfur region. In fact, just to give you some numbers on how successful we have been, um, we had ten spots, we, what we call the world competition, which is housed in Dallas every year for elementary school, here in this region, we took five of those. For middle school, we took, you know, seven spots, we took all seven. Yes. Just to tell you, you know, like I said, it's not us, that is your students, that is you all, that is the parents who are supporting, Venton took six of those last year, WW Lewis took the last spot, okay, and this year, we're looking to exactly do the exact same thing, and when I say that, we host the largest competitions in the entire state, and we're looking to be able to host better and higher quality competitions comparable to other places that are in the na- rest of the nation. Um, if you didn't know, two hours away with NASA, Texas right now is leading the nation when it comes to this with SpaceX and Tesla, we're seeing here like, why are we not, we're two hours away, with more money, more resources, why are we not beating them? Why are we not being able to even compete and raise our education level to be comparable to that, and that's where we come in to change, okay? With that, that's why I'm here to talk about getting support, okay, right now, just to give you a heads up, we're hosting once again the largest competition in the state, we already hosted our IQ competition, we had twenty-eight teams come, we host up to forty teams, and we're talking that, we're talking a hundred to three-hundred something kids in a facility competing up for robotics, including their parents. We just hosted the largest, what we call, middle school and high school competition this last Saturday, and I'm gonna be honest with y'all, absolutely crazy, we talked about a hundred, um, to two-hundred something middle school and high school kids coming here to this region throughout the entire state to see who is the best engineers, who is the best programmers, who is the best, uh, competitors when it comes to robotics, and the best part about this is, it's not us as adults who do it, it is a hundred percent student-led, you can ask him, it is frustrating because the students have to do everything, they have to plan, okay, they gotta strategize, they gotta use the engineering and design model to use critical thinking and problem-solving skills, then take that to go to a competition to compete against other students, to see, you know what, who can problem solve on the fly, and who are the best engineers on the fly, who are the best programmers on the fly, and who can come out on top, as, as we see some of the best competitors when it comes to robotics. I know we're bi- big in the South, I'm a big football guy, and the way we approach this is, is no different from any other sport, in fact, we call it the sport for tomorrow's careers, because there's not another sport that when you do all the same skills of communication, collaboration, teamwork, and working together as kids, that you could take those skills and be successful in any career in the future. As of right now, our robotics, our drone programs, our space programs, is the only sport that we will say that could prepare you for any job in the future, okay? Now, we reached out, and I reached out to the city council, uh, because once again, we're still in our developing years, we're still building, even though we are the largest here, um, and with that, this year, we brought back the state championship for robotics here to, um, southwest Louisiana. On February twenty-fifth, we'll be hosting the state championship for robotics, we're talking a hundred and forty teams, and when I'm talking a hundred and forty teams, let's do the math with that, a hundred and forty teams from third grade all the way up to university, okay, competing for robotics, let me backtrack one more time, when I say university, we're talking about McNeese here, because we work with those as well. McNeese has served as our, uh, our judge, referees at every single one of our competitions, and what that has done is prepared McNeese to go to Worlds where they went last year, and when I say Worlds, this is a worldwide competition, okay, you compete against every other university and every other student from every country on this globe. McNeese went to Worlds based of, based off of working with us for an entire year, and they came out as champions, as the judges' favorite team in the entire world for robotics in their first year of doing. So, I want you to think about the success that comes from that, yes, McNeese State University is the world's favorite team when it comes to science, technology, engineering, mathematics, when it's involved with robotics. So, with that, we are bringing the state championship for robotics here to the Burton Coliseum, February twenty-fifth, and we work heavily with the Lake Area Alliance, they are our biggest supporters, um, but one of the things we want to reach out to is let the people know, okay, let the community know, that it's not just what we got going on with Lake Charles Boston, we have teams all throughout this hit region, all throughout this area, and we need you all's support, okay, we're not looking for money, you know, so we get a little bit of money coming there because the school system doesn't support us, so our industry partners help us out, but what we need is volunteers, what we need is support, what we need is people to put the word out, what we need people to do is let their kids know, let their schools know, let their teachers know, the programs and the things that we have here, so we can continuously lift it up, because right now, even though we have been successful as we are, we're still what we call a well-known secret. You know what I'm saying, and I'm gonna be honest, and they, they shaking their head yes, because you know, um, and when we say that, we have robotics at every single school, but they may only have five kids on their robotics team, they only may have six kids, and they picking and choosing what kids on their robotics team, so what we've done, we even opened our doors to allow anybody to come to our facility to get, no matter where you are, no matter whether you're homeschool, public school, private school, charter school, no matter what school you come to, from third grade up to university, to get any of the experiences you need to become whatever you want to be in the future. That's why, like I said, I got my guy in the robotics team, he wasn't able to get on the robotics at his school, so now he's with us, but what we're here for, and what I'm speaking for you, and once again, thank you for allowing me to present, I want to be quick, because I know you got a long docket, and like I said, there's a whole lot of things that we have going on, there's a whole lot of information, what we want you to do, and what I would love you to do, um, is let people know what we have going on, okay? If you don't, if you have kids, or you have people who want to do robotics, or introducing, or int- uh, or interested in that, and they're now on your teams, talk to your principals, talk to your teachers, talk to your administration, because once again, it's not up to us, we're trying as educators the best way we can, but one of the things is, this is not a school program, and that's one thing that people fail to realize, this is a community program, it requires the entire community, in order for everybody to be involved and get invested into this, because once again, it's not just to prepare the kids, and I'm gonna say that again, it's for K to twelve education, career in college, and workforce, which includes each and every single one of you all. So, hey, y'all need the training, learn how to, uh, you want to learn how to, uh, program a computer, okay? I see my gentleman who was in here earlier with the fire department on here, we actually have drones that we're building right now with the entire purpose of putting out city fires, we're working on that as we speak, okay? We're looking at putting satellites in the space within the next three to five years, right over here in geolocation over, uh, Lake Charles, so at any point, you want to see what's going on, I mean, instead of you watching the weather channel to see the next hurricane, you can ask one of your students to log into their own satellite and check it out yourself, but once again, it's not just for the students, it's for each and every single one of you all, and once again, I appreciate you, um, Sulfur City Council, because this is something that we're here to let everybody know to be part of, okay? Um, with that, uh, once again, I'm from the Region Five STEM Center, um, this is, I'm gonna be honest, I have not prepared this, what I got going on, I mean, I got a PowerPoint presentation, all like, for many different things, and there's so much more that comes with it, this is just a sno- a small snip- a snippet of the things that we have to offer, okay? But I'm Darren Dotson, I'm from the Region Five STEM Center, LCB, definitely look us up on Facebook, because that's our best way of communicating to the city, um, to the pe- to the public, um, once again, like I said, I'm still a teacher, as you know, that may know, uh, so it's like, it's hard to communicate with just any and everybody, so we put our stuff on Facebook, definitely follow us there, and also let the word know that what's here, okay, because like I said before, we're a well-known secret, and we want to get everybody involved, uh, each and every single one of you, you know what I mean? I mean, really, Burton Coliseum, we want to pack the stands and support our people in this region on the great things that's going on, and of course, we can't do it alone, um, as a school system, we need you all's help, okay? Um, but once again, thank y'all for, uh, your time and everything like that, I'm out. Appreciate that. Um, I, I, I really wish I could stay, um, but, uh, we do have what we call another program, FRC, Stephen Bradrean used to work, he used to go to Sulfur High School, we have now, it's called FRC, big hundred and twenty pound, uh, pound block, they're working on that right now at the STEM Center, um, and like I said, we opened that up for everybody to be part of it, so we are facilitating it on that, and once again, thank you all enough, hopefully I get a chance to, you know, say, talk some more, and get a little bit more specific information, um, with that, February twenty-fifth, please lock that date down, okay? I'm gonna let you know that you're going to hear about it, I'm about to pump so much money onto the news, onto Facebook advertising, I'm gonna let you know, I'm gonna be out on the street throwing paper airplanes and flying drones, I'm gonna let you know, okay? So, definitely, definitely lock those days in, and, uh, hopefully I'll be able to talk to you all and see y'all some more, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on organs creating a home role charter commission for the city of Sulfur.
So, wait, second?
Would anyone like to?
Sorry.
Would anyone, I, well, I do have some people, I have Ms. Sheila Broussard.
Yes, ma'am.
I think she has, um, presentation that she worked up for us.
Not really a presentation, just some comments, thank you. Uh, the petition forcing the council to hold an election for the charter commission was being offered to the registered voters, I'm sure most of you know that. More than ninety-five percent of the people who were approached were eager to sign that petition, more than one city official has said, the council will treat the petition as an amendment that would require thirty percent of the electorate to sign, and not the ten percent that the constitution says is needed. Calling the petition and amendment would not hold up in court, but I am not going to hire a lawyer to fight the city council. So, the administration has been successful in shutting down the petition that would call for, um, an election of the charter, of the commission for the charter. Saw the names today on the, uh, resin, resin ad, whatever you call that, ordinance thing, I'm really happy, I know a few of the people on there, I think they could do a great job, I am not disappointed with the people that you chose, the ones that I know of, you chose great people to be on this commission, and I think they'll do a good job. I don't think that the council listened to the public, um, I don't know how many people you talked to, I do know that I polled over a hundred people, and the overwhelming response was, um, that they felt like it was common sense for an election to be held, not for you to appoint. Um, so, that is my concern, is the citizens being heard, and the citizens having all the rights that they deserve given to them. So, my questions are, and I, and I hope y'all have some answers for these, um, how often will the commission meet, and you may not know these yet, I know a lot of this is in the planning stage, but I'd like to know what you do know, um, how often they will meet, when and where the meetings will be held, if they are open to the public, and can the public comment at the meetings? So, any, any more details you can give us than was on the background information, I appreciate that, thank you, Ben.
I, well, I, so, the, we were gonna, we wanted to give the people who want to serve on the commission, um, a, a lot of input as far as when the meetings will be held, what, you know, what works best with their schedules, um, everything is subject to the open meetings laws, so, yes, the public will be able to participate, be present, we'll put out all that information as we, you know, as is determined.
Good.
Yes, that information will be put out so that, you know, the public can be involved, we can be involved.
As a, uh, open meeting, I will be doing Facebook Live at those meetings, all of them that I can make it to, which I hope is a hundred percent.
I think that's normal, yeah, that's fine, I thought so, I just wanted to confirm, I'd be fine.
Thank you.
That's what we're thinking about.
Plan on the being here, the, the issue is, is the council can't actually control how the commission does its business, so the commission can do its business however it sees fit, I think it would be a recommendation that they have them, you know, in the evening, somewhere to council meetings, um, you know, in a public place like this, they, they have to be an advertised public meeting, that we did, other than that, it'll be whatever the commission decides when it gets together and has to.
Yes, so basically, once we form it, I mean, we don't have any control over them, which I think is, that's the purpose, that's the goal, you know, we want them to be their own in- independent thinking, um, and, you know, who we feel is most qualified to make those recommendations. And I also have Mr. Bill LeBlanc for next.
Yeah, I just, I just have one question, uh, when, when we did this last time, you know, there was some holdback, you know, for, for time, and I think that would be a good idea, and I don't know if it's legal or whatever, you'd have to talk to, uh, this guy about that, I mean, we'd like, like to set a time limit, you know, we don't want this thing to rock on like the other one did, if you remember, the other one rocked on a long time, before we ever got anything back, you know, that anybody could even look at, you know, they had some, some issues getting started, and as, as it ended up, one, one person pretty much. You know, they had some, some issues getting started, and as, as it ended up, one, one person pretty much wrote the book, the bulk of it. And, I mean, he did a good job. I'm not, I'm not knocking that, but I mean, uh, if there's some, some way to kind of project the time then, on this, and they can meet for, you know, we met one time over something, I don't remember what it was, but we spent some money, you remember that? Giving money, you know, over something, and, uh, we had a lawyer involved over the zoning thing, and all that just fell apart. Remember we had, uh, Rashir, the lawyer, and all that, meet once and everything? We met a lot of times, you know, and, and we didn't get anything done, because it was too much turmoil. So I think the city council is gonna have to set some kind of guidelines as far as the time, time span this is gonna take. If, if you can't, then administration maybe can. Thank you.
Isn't there a timeline set by the state?
The statute provides for eighteen months, and so we've allowed for the eighteen months. I would say the goal would be, um, is really you can kind of back calculate it from whatever election you're trying to put it before the people on. So if you wanted to put it before the people at the presidential election next year, you can need it to be done by about June. Um, it, you know, obviously, so if you wanted to do after that, there'd be a different date. But it's usually gonna be about, about five months out from the relevant election date, is gonna be the deadline to be on that election ballot. So that kind of serves as a target, you know, if they get together and they say, hey, we'd like to, we, uh, I say, I said president, I mean gubernatorial, but the gubernatorial ballot in, uh, in the fall of next year, you would be, uh, you would be looking to try to be done by June. If that's not enough time to get your work done, then you pick something else, but overall, they have to be done within eighteen months.
Yes, I did want to go over the names. We have District One, Gina Granger; District Two, Donna Emmons; District Three, Dennis Bergeron; District Four, Sid Ross Seet; and District Five, Carla Sigler. And then we also have two, um, that were appointed by the mayor, so they're not a specific district, Becky Venisad and Danny DePetta. Anybody have any questions or anything else to add? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number three is a public hearing on ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign an agreement with Salford Housing Authority for a sanitary sewer lift station replacement. Mayor Danahay?
Mayor Chair, uh, ask that we postpone this, uh, we have not received the necessary agreement as of yet, so if we could just put that on, if that's possible.
Does anyone wish to speak on that item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number four is a public hearing on ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property of the city of Salford and providing for disposal thereof. Mayor Danahay?
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Item number five, the public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance six eighty-two to correct a property description for annexation of J and J outdoor advertising. Mayor Danahay?
Second.
Roll call, please, early.
Ms. Abchar?
Oh wait, does anyone wish to speak on that item? Roll call, please, early.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item number six is the introduction of ordinance, amending ordinance one six nine six. Uh, one, it's a one-half cent sales tax. Mayor Danahay, or I actually think we're referring to Ms. Jennifer Thorne.
Oh, I can read this one. The, uh, what happened is, is the legislature reduced the maximum amount of interest that's charged on unpaid taxes, for people who didn't pay their sales taxes when they were supposed to, from one and a quarter percent per month to one percent per month. So we have to amend all our ordinances to match that, and, and then that'll be most of these. Uh, but then there's also a set of definitions that they wanted to adopt the uniform local sales tax code by reference. So for various of our taxes that we levy, we're just conforming the ordinances that we previously adopted to these state law changes, and that's how it's done.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item number seven is the introduction of ordinance, amending ordinance number six one seven. Mrs. Page, you want to take this one off?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Or does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number eight is the introduction of ordinance amending number four three five, master set, master sales and use tax four minutes. This goes along with the, um, does anyone wish to speak on this item?
We levy our taxes, like there's a one cent levy, and then there's another one cent levy, and then that's why you have to, and then we'll have to do it again for some of our EDP districts that we have associated with hotels. So that's why we're doing it over and over again, even though it's a second.
And this wants to amend the definition. Roll call, please, early.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Number nine, introduction of ordinance granting a right of way and authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to execute right of way with Energy Louisiana LLC for the property located across and above Rose Lawn Cemetery.
So moved. Second.
Energy is running a transmission line over Rose Lawn Cemetery, sorry, there. Anything else you want to add on that one?
No, I just.
Do I have a motion and a second? Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Item ten is the introduction of ordinance amending number one seven one two, which authorize Mayor Danahay to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Calchi Parish Police Jury and work for Marshall's Office for salaries for the Marshall's Office. Mayor Danahay?
Yeah, Mayor Chair, they, they performed, uh, uh, they performed duties for the parish just as well, or for Marshall, and so this is their contribution, uh, to their expenses.
We're the paymaster.
Yeah, we're the paymaster.
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item number eleven is the introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to enter into a joint service agreement with Calchi Parish Public Safety Communications District for dispatching service to Salford Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
This is an annual agreement.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item number twelve. It's not too close to, oh. Item number twelve is the introduction of ordinance authorizing the private sale of police off, to a police officer that is no, no, no longer needed for police work.
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is the introduction of ordinance repealing ordinance one two nine nine, which created the Hope Economic Development District on Begless Parkway. And the Economic Development District is no longer necessary for the original intent. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is the introduction of ordinance repealing ordinance number one three one two, which authorize the levy of a sales tax and hotel occupancy tax for the Hope Econo- Economic Development District located on Begless Parkway.
So moved. Second.
Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is the introduction of ordinance repealing ordinance one three one three, which authorize Hope Economic Development District to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Salford. The Hope, I'm sorry, the District and Hope Investment One LLC with respect to economic development projects within the district.
So moved.
So moved.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item sixteen, introduction of ordinance repealing one three one four, which authorize the city of Salford to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Salford, the District and Hope Investment One LLC to govern the collection of the tax, the use of the proceeds of the tax, the operation of the district, and the obligation of the company.
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, the introduction of ordinance amending ordinance one three six nine, which authorize the levy of a sales tax and hotel occupancy tax for the, I'm not sure if I'm gonna mispronounce this, Opel Ram Economic Development District located on West Cow Boulevard.
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, introduction of ordinance amending number one three seven two, which authorize the levy of a sales tax and hotel occupancy tax for the Ex- Executive Economic Development District located west of Calchi, uh, West Cow Arena.
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, resolution rejecting and authorizing the re-advertising of bids for Salford Law Enforcement Center storm repairs. Mayor Danahay?
We had the bid opening this last week. We only received one bid, and it came in almost a hundred percent over our budget. So we, um, we spoke with our engineers, and, uh, we believe that, uh, we, we only advertised locally. Um, and there's so much work going on, there's only so many people who bid, so the only person that bid just bid high. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and reject the bid, and then we're going to expand our advertisement.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
I was gonna ask you, John, uh, approach the bidder with, uh, doing some value engineering on that.
You can really only do that if you specify that that, in advance of the bid, that that's how you're gonna do it. So this, your only option is to take the bid or to reject it for being over budget. And when, you know, something's seven hundred and sixty thousand over a seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget.
I know that that's kind of beginning to be the norm, that there's a lot of value engineering. We also found that, um, and, uh, engineering firms spoke with some of the other, um, companies that had reached out initially that was gonna bid. They were having some issues with the ballist, getting pricing on ballistic glass, so we took that out of the, one of the amendments. Addendums. He walked out anyway. We're, we're gonna still do the ballistic class, but it might be something that we just do on our own rather than put it in with the contract. Or do it as a change order later on.
You had your motion and a second?
That's number twenty.
Uh, ninety nineteen.
I had a motion and a second, yes. Uh, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Item number twenty is a resolution amending previously adopted agreement with Rowston Solutions LLC to include new task order for insurance services and new federal clauses.
So moved. Second.
The Rock Stand is our human consultants, and, um, and the government regulations raise the ceiling on acquisition thresholds, so this is just including that language.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item twenty-one is a resolution accepting substantial completion for Rose Lawn Cemetery storm repairs.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Danahay, I see it says only one item remaining on the punch list.
Yeah, it's on the punch list, and, and we withhold the last payment until that's completed, so.
Does anyone wish to speak on that item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two is rule to show cause for condition of following addresses. Item A is to condemn building or structure located at seven oh five North Stanford Street.
That's mine. Uh, so moved. Shelley, is this the one we talked about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on this one, the one on Stanford, it doesn't look bad. It looks like they've done some stuff to it. So, um, um, I'm asked, I'm going to vote no on this one because I think they've done some stuff, and they, they, uh, which means they're not gonna condemn the building. So that's my vote.
Do you, do you think it's in a position where it's fixed enough to where if they do no more repairs, it's not gonna be condemnable, or?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah. And just speak, um, your name and address?
My name is Gail Stahl, and seven oh five North Stanford is my family property. I'm, I'm waiting on four signatures to finish this session. My question is though, I can't have anybody stay there and get the utilities turned on in their names, keep an eye on things until all this is done.
Remember, I don't think you can.
Okay, I was just double checking. I, I just didn't know. Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
I need a second.
Second.
So if you vote yes, we will condemn it, and if you vote no, we will not.
Correct.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
No.
Mr. Naza?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Abchar?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Thank you, thank you.
Item B is to condemn building or structure located at eight one zero North Clay Run Street, number sixteen, number twenty, number twenty-three, number eight five. Ms. Ellender?
Okay, so I rode by here, and I went to the wrong place, because the numbers are all crazy over there. Um, but I did talk to Shelley, and, um, I'll make a motion. Second. So moved.
Does anyone here to speak on this item? Or wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item C, to condemn building or structure located at nine one four Platte Street. to condemn building or structure located at nine one four Platte Street. Ms. Ellender?
Two firsts.
Someone here on that? Is this the one that burns?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And you are doing, I see you're doing some stuff out there.
Oh, I don't live there. Trust me, I wouldn't live there.
Okay, but I mean you're, they're cleaning it up, right?
They're cleaning it up, but I wanna say they have a camper out there. No, they had a red, y'all labeled it. They got served. No one's supposed to be there. They moved that camper there. We asked that that camper be moved. The camper is still there. We knew way ahead of time. We've asked Salford officials. I've spoken with Mr. Danahay about this several times. Yes, ma'am, and I've spoke, uh, corresponded with you.
Yeah.
They are living in this camper. No electricity, no water. I wanna know where they putting their waste. And they have been using a generator. They're not supposed to live on this property. But our cries keep going unnoticed.
Do you own this?
No, I don't, 'cause if I did, they wouldn't be there. I live at nine thirteen Platte Street.
Cheryl Singleton?
Yes, I live right across the street from them.
Okay, but where?
We're talking about nine fourteen Platte Street.
Okay, I'm, I'm wanting to talk to the owner. Are they here?
They are not here.
Okay.
Of course they wouldn't be here. 'Cause they won't, they don't wanna be, they wanna just do everything, you know, against the law. They don't wanna, we have to, I understand they're trying, they, they're like anybody else. They need a place to stay. I get that. But we all here in this room have to go by the rules. We have to abide by the law. Why don't they? And I saw that Shelley passed by there today. I saw you pass by there this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they are cleaning it up?
Yes, ma'am. They have tore down the burnt structure. They removed the motor home that was there. They've taken out, there's still some debris there.
Yes, I saw that.
And the, the camper is there.
And they are living there. We, the neighbors.
Get the weight, keep up to the, um, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know that they are. I can't speak on that.
So if we give them thirty days, they have thirty days to do something, right?
If you want, if you want to vote to condemn what was there and what we were going after was the burnt trailer, that's gone.
So is the camper another thing you'll have to go after?
Yes.
So it's gonna be two separate items for a storm?
Okay, so we're only talking about the, the trailer and the debris leaving, and they are doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, I just realized, this is the camper she applied for a variance because her house burned.
Her house burned.
Yeah.
She did apply for a variance.
So they need next week to see if she'll get the variance.
Okay, so we're not doing anything about the camper today?
Correct.
Only talking about the house.
Right, I don't have, I don't have jurisdiction of that.
So will we be asked to go to this meeting?
Yes, ma'am. It's a public meeting.
I thought so, because like I said, we have proof on camera that they will.
To the information. Are you done, Ms. uh, Shelley, or? 'Cause I still have one more person sign up to speak, so I wanna make sure that, um.
He's, he's signed up to speak.
I was the other one that was speaking.
I did, but I won't do. I still don't understand. Somebody runs a red light here in a minute, cops stop them, do they have to go and get a variance or whatever to get out of it? I mean, we got a trailer we moved in there illegally because nobody got a permit or anything else. And they're living there. I know because I go, I'm, I, I circulate to Salford sometime, you know, like every day. And really, that's the same place we've had issues for a long time. You know, I used to own the property right across the street, nine nineteen, you know, and that's been a nice little thirty-something years, you know? I, I can't understand how somebody can just move something in that's illegal without a permit or anything else and nobody can do anything about it unless we go through this long, lengthy process. You know, uh, I turned in some trailers here a while back. We got, we got people living in travel trailers all over that lived here before the storm. You know, they're still there. They got their flowers planted, they got trees there, and nobody does anything about it. You know, and, and it's, I, I don't understand the law. I, I guess I don't, you know, because I, I told you the other day, Driscilla, I'd like to get a, a variance to run stop signs and red lights, you know, because I mean, if that's all you gotta do to do away with the law is get a variance, I may apply for one. Ridiculous.
Can I ask a question? Is it, the, the trailer that's moved in, is it a camper trailer or is it actually a motor?
Is it a camper?
Camper.
It is a camper. And they didn't get a permit.
It's, um.
But that will come up at the land use. So we can't rule on that.
We're not ruling on the camper.
So will y'all supply us with the date?
Yes, ma'am. We'll get you that. We can.
It's next month?
So we're coming to the actual.
In this one?
Okay, thank you.
At five thirty.
Same time. It's written on the sign and, and.
Well, I try not to go too close over there because I would go to jail probably.
Mister, Mister Joshua, did you still wanna speak on the item?
I mean, they pretty much covered everything. Uh, but I would like to say that I've only been a resident of Platte Street for two years. I have small children. And they have Joshua Kearns, uh, K E A Arnas. They, they have been a constant issue. Uh, I understand this is only about the trailer that you're condemning. But like the, the question they had, like, how many more variances are they going to get until it's just the entire property is condemned? 'Cause it is, it looks like a junkyard, you know, which is not good. I have small children that would like to play in the front yard on the street with their grandchildren. We don't feel comfortable with that. We can't even secure the pit bulls that they had. You know what I'm saying? The pit bulls that.
I'm going to say.
And they, and there have been, they're not there right now, but there have been dogs there again that are not secured. So as a young father, just kinda would like my kids to have somewhat of a similar childhood playing in their neighborhood.
Can I ask one question? So just a quick question. So the property in question tonight that has been taken down and was burned, how far is now removed? It's no longer on the property?
That it, they are removing it. That it burned. The trailer burned and when I went by today, it's not totally.
Why don't y'all condemn it and then give them the thirty days to finish removing it? And if they haven't finished removing it, then you have those items.
'Cause I would be in favor of them taking sixty days to finish removing. It needs to go. And it's been limited time.
It's. So.
Yeah, no, I know.
Okay, so you wanna?
Shelley, how long have they been?
The, remove, when they started demoing it probably about three weeks.
Oh, they've just been working on it three weeks?
I mean, these letters were gone a long time before that, but the actual removing of the burnt trailer was probably been about three weeks.
So I make a motion for number C. So if you vote yes, we can condemn it. No, we do not.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call please.
Uh, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
And next Monday, they will have a land use meeting on her getting a variance for her.
I just can't sprinkle that, but that's not, I don't have anything.
That's not a, that's not.
All right. Item D, to condemn building or structure located at nine oh four Taylor Street. Ms. Hardy?
Um, I think the city's done their due diligence.
Is there anyone here to speak on that address? I've, they've signed for it, but not contacted me at all. It's, it's a accessory building in the backyard that has collapsed.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Certainly.
Oh, second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? All right, roll call please.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy? Yes.
Item E, to condemn building or structure located at two oh one East Milosin Drive. Ms. Hardy?
Anyone here to speak? So, um, on that one, it's un, it's unsecured.
Correct. It's been vandalized.
And, and on the back, it looks like the roof is down and stuff like that.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Motion in a second?
It's a move?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Item F, to condemn building or structure located at seven oh eight Landry Street. Mr. Nazad?
I, I believe this one's.
This, this one was demoed Friday.
Right.
Too late for me to hold it off.
Y'all satisfied with its condition, then you would not need to condemn it.
And, and the debris's been.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been, yeah.
Cleaned up, all clear.
So we don't have to vote on it? Or do we still need to vote not?
Not to condemn it.
We're, do you have a motion in a second?
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's been, yeah, it's clear.
Roll call please.
No motion in a second.
I can motion, yeah.
And just to verify, no one's signed up to speak. Just making sure no one wants to speak on this item. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Ellender?
No.
Mr. Na- Mr. Nazad?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Abshar?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No. Item G, to condemn building or structure located at one oh five Perkins Street. Ms. Ellender?
Shelley, this one's unsecured.
Correct.
And, um.
And, um, it's been vandalized quite a bit also.
So, uh, I make a motion to condemn it.
Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call please.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item H, to condemn building or structure located at sixteen oh nine Palermo Drive. Ms. Abshar?
Uh, the owners of this property have been given to Friday, that's November the eighteenth, to get a demo permit. If it's not secured by then, then, um, we, we are gonna move to. And there's been several conversations.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
The owner's not here to.
You voted on this to be condemned already with conditions, and those conditions were not met, and the owners have decided.
It's only, but there were three conditions and only one of them we had. So, um, I don't think it's gonna go forward in repairs. And so, uh, they, the owners have recognized that at this point, and they have to Friday to pull the permit. Otherwise, we're gonna condemn it.
Second.
So I'm not real sure what y'all need to do on, on.
Yeah, I think we have to vote on to condemn it now. I'm sure giving it up to the eighteen.
This one.
I would just say, you vote to condemn it, no conditions.
Okay.
If they didn't thirty days, they'd have to.
Then they're Friday, they're Friday.
Yeah, they've, they've exceeded those, the John has set already.
So if they get the permit, taking them Friday, we won't come and even get it. We'll work with them.
Correct.
Right, right. We'll be happy to work with them if they get their permits, but if not, then.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
Second.
Nick can.
Roll call please.
Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Item twenty-three is extension for temporary housing in recreational vehicles due to damage caused by Hurricane Laura for the following addresses. This is living in an RV after a year and a half. Item A, to extend property housing in a recreational vehicle located at three oh six Dorian Street.
That's mine, um. I make a motion, but I would, I think you all have it on your. It's a, it's a foot and no land use.
Does anyone here to speak on this item? Motion, have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Thomas? It's a no. Ms. Ellender?
No.
Mr. Nazad?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Abshar?
No.
Item B, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at nine oh, nine forty-five Ulla Street.
Uh, Madam Chair, I need to abstain from voting. Uh, the owners are related to my children.
All the owners here? Anyone wish to speak on this item? Do you have a motion in a second?
It's a move? Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
And Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Item C, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at nine point Seto Road. Does anyone here to speak on this item? Do you have a motion in a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item D, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at nine oh six Taylor Street.
It's a move?
Second.
Does anyone here to speak on this item? Roll call please.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
I think they were at the land use, not that floor. They were supposed to be both.
I'm thinking that this, and it says permit issued, say when the permits were issued, so I'm thinking, okay, they've already, but no, it's not.
Most of these, um, there is progress being made on their repairs.
Okay. Okay.
And some of them are actually very close to probably moving back into their home.
Okay, good deal. All right.
All right, then, um, item E, the next, the next two are living in an RV after two years.
Motion.
Item E, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle at four eleven Bowie Street.
It's a move?
They are pretty much almost done, uh, with, with their home. Um, they've made significant progress. I know they're waiting for a while, but, um, it's almost complete, so they are making a lot of progress.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Have a motion in a second. Roll call please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Item F, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehi- vehi- vehicle located at eight five one McGarther Street.
I'm here. Yay! My name is Jill Fonte. Um, that is my property. I just, and I have the check, just received a check from my insurance finally last week. I overnighted it today. I have to get it back from my mortgage company, then I can move forward with repairs finally.
Can you have it in your van, the check?
Yeah. Well, the stove. You know, you wanna see that?
'Cause I think when you said no to this.
Yeah, I wasn't able to come to that meeting.
And this is arguing, oh, yeah, I see. That was a dollar sign. That was a dollar sign.
I know it's been a while, the house has been.
Yes.
Uh, needing some.
I'm actually, um, I spoke to someone in the, um, office last week, and I need to pull a permit because I'm going to be taking the, one of the structures down. And, uh, leaving one of them and adding on to that one, there's two on that property, but they're attached. Um, so I'll be going to pull a permit for that one next week.
Can we put conditions on this one?
Which condition would you like?
Well, I'd like to see that progress is being made before I, you know.
Me too, I don't mind that. So I mean, the problem's going to be, there's going to be a delay getting the money back from the mortgage company, then there's going to be a delay, you know, getting work started.
And there's no way you can start work right now, she has a check, she can start work.
Well, I had it back in my bag, I had to send it to my mortgage company because they're also on the check. Which mortgage company is? Uh, PHH. Yeah. The statements are the worst, sometimes. It's in Ohio. Sometimes they won't give you your money back until, you know, you give them things like a signed contract. And I was actually fighting that, and, um, since I'm doing most of my own contracting, uh, they're, they have agreed to release a larger amount. Back to them than what they normally do to, to get started, because I can't do anything without supplies. So I had to explain that to them. I think y'all could make the extension, you know, have her come back, have her many months or whatever you want to have her come back, but based on what I've seen. It would not be unusual that it takes a while to get things done.
I, I'm in support of giving her the time, um, because, you know, she can't control when the check was issued, but she got it. And she can't control how long the timeline of going through.
Yeah, we've been, I can, I have emails, that's really the only thing I have to show you, going back for like the last year, back in.
I would for more, for having more time.
I think we can all send them out. Yes.
So are we doing it for the six, an additional six months?
Well, as, as these others are for whatever.
They're six months.
Yes.
I, I'm in favor of you having more time, but just to, out of curiosity, because this, I know it's, there's been some that. They don't communicate with our permitting office, or if they've reached out to you, there's no communication back. And that gives me grave concern when someone doesn't communicate back, and it seems like you would be willing to do that.
To communicate?
To communicate, to just let them stay apprised of.
Oh, I mean, I'm going to be doing all the what?
Sure, I understand that.
Contracting out, so yeah.
Sure, and I understand that, but communication has been the key, I mean, as you can tell tonight, so many people didn't show up, and that gives you great concern and. Really question.
Right.
What's their intentions?
Right.
I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item before we move forward? Do I have a motion in a second?
So move.
We have a second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item twenty-three A, a resolution authorizing the advertisement of bids for the annual supply of pipe and fittings, limestone and asphalt mix. And chemical supplies for the city of Suffolk. Is there a damage?
So move. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nezat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Alright, and then. Item twenty-four is our public comment section, we ask that you please try to limit it to three minutes. And I have Ms. Sheila Bruce on.
Thank you, Sheila Bruce, nine three sixteen, fifty-five Street in Suffolk. As I stated before, I do feel like the voice of the citizens is not being heard. Uh, we've had problems with the agenda, with the wording, timing of release, amendments added at the last, at the beginning of meetings. Recordings of meetings have been stopped, disregard for the citizens wanting an election for admission. Disregard for Robert's Rules of Order, disregard for the Home Rule Charter. The wording of the agenda, uh, for one item was the opposite of what the council intended to do. Robert's Rules of Order says that it should be specific on what the council intends to do. The agenda said the council was voting to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement with a videographer back in June. When in reality, the council intended to not enter into the agreement. It's deceptive and is contrary to Robert's Rules of Order. Agendas were late coming out, when they did come out on time, many items were added and, to, and amended to the agenda. Citizens have lost the right to know when this happens. The Home Rule Charter as it stands now says specifically, the public, published agenda may be amended at the meeting. Upon the favorable vote of the majority of the council membership, but only for routine administrative matters. So when, when you say, well, the, it came in late, that's not administrative, that's not administrative reason. When I spoke to a council person in another part of Southwest Louisiana and asked them how they did it. She told me only one time, and over her four years on that council, was anything added as an amendment to an agenda. And that it was a critical matter that had to be added. I understand you want to be nice to your citizens who come in, but to be nice to one citizen who has something that they want on the agenda. Disregarding all the citizens who have the right to know what's going to be on that agenda, is not fair to the majority. Recordings and meetings were stopped, a poll of citizen, citizens indicates at least ninety percent of the registered voters want those recordings. Not always because of transparency, so they have other reasons, they feel like you are fully transparent enough, but they still want the recordings. So whether or not the council agrees you are transparent or not, ending videos definitely takes away some transparency. And definitely takes away the rights of citizens to be informed. Citizens trust, citizens trust for what the council will do, and trust that our rights and opinions are, and values. Is eroded with the problems of the agenda, with the meetings being stopped, with disregarding citizens wanting the election for the commission. And disregarding Robert's Rules of Order and the Home Rule Charter. So that's my statement for this evening, and I thank you for giving the time.
Thank you.
Amy Felice, twenty-three, twenty-nine, August eighth. Um, an interesting Facebook memory popped up from today on my newsfeed. It was November fourteenth, two thousand nine, thirteen years ago. My post read, exciting Saturday night, watching the city council meeting on the government channel at nine. I don't know why I posted that back then, I was probably new to Facebook, and it was a time when we just posted everything that we were doing and how we were feeling. Um, anyway, my very best friend commented, and her comment was, I still can't believe you watch those. My reply was, I love knowing what's going on in the town that I love, you're just jealous Lake Charles doesn't film their meetings, lol. This Facebook memory is interesting, because if you haven't heard yet, Lake Charles City Council voted unanimously to start filming. And I hope this will encourage those who, uh, post filming to make the consent.